Okay, I think, okay, call the meeting to order. And if we could have the roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. Ms. Dougherty, present. Mr. Pawlowski?
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
And Mr. Souza?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Presence. Thank you. And Mrs. Fagan, if you'd like to do the prayer at the moment of silence?
Yes. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And we'd also like to have a moment of silence for Janet McConville, longtime English teacher at Taunton High School who passed away. Thank you.
Okay, so if there's any public input, we can take it at this time. The number to call would be 508-821-1221. And that number should be up on the screen right now. So we can, I'm not sure who over there is in charge of the phones.
Yeah, Mr. Barata is manning the phone this evening. So if you wait a few minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, usually I'll just wait a couple of minutes to see if we get any calls and then close it. So, all right, we'll just take two minutes.
Steve, what's that other THS TV login?
So that is because I am back home tonight. So I'm actually hosting the meeting from my office.
You're doing both?
Yeah, so there's an extra one. But on the, on TV, people don't see that.
Thank you.
So the number is on the screen. It went on about two minutes ago or so. It just took me a minute to get it up there.
Okay, so there has been no public input. So we can move on to be the superintendent's update. Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm just going to share the screen real quick. Can everyone see the screen okay?
Yes.
So as part of our update, we're going to jump right into the budget priorities that the school committee worked on between last Wednesday night and today. I want to thank everyone for their diligence and their thoroughness and also being very thoughtful in going through these items and identifying which priorities. Should our funding change, which priorities you would like to see returns in the FY '21 budget? So this is the weighted list that Donna Binns compiled based on all your input. So the top item was athletic trainer. The second item was assistant payroll accounts payable. Library assistance was third. Instructional coaches from elementary and middle school were four and five. Information service registrar was next. Music teacher followed by the test of floats. The registrar, the welcome center. The coordinator for business partnerships and internships at the high school. Testing and team facilitator also at the high school. Assistant payroll clerk. Computer teachers at the middle school. Library supplies. The art teacher. Coaching for change. Level funding salaries. Atlas, which houses our curriculum. Taunton Area School to Career. HR Technology Assistant, which is currently vacant. Team chairs, which is currently vacant. Director of Grants, which is currently vacant. Rounded up the bottom of the list. So this is what you identified as a group as being your top priorities that we would return back to the school department. Should our appropriation or should our, should our figures of funding change? They also had the leadership team conduct the same exercise. And there were some similarities. Though the leadership team identify the following as our budget priorities that we would see returns should our funding change. Again, the information services came in at number one, which again, that position enters all our SIMs data related to our students and also to our staff at DESI. The assistant payroll and accounts payable works in the business office, which again, this time of year is, it's very busy as we are turning over the pay cards. You know, that was, that was a department that we were trying to add support to. So again, reinstating this position would go a long way. Instructional coaches for the elementary and middle school would be three and four. Level funding our salaries. Five, the test of float assist. Even sixth. And the reasoning there for the leadership team was the additional of educational assistance would provide coverage should we have staff absent. So we thought that would be important to have. Director of Grants. The team chairs. The team and testing facilitator. The assistant payroll clerk. That is a vacant position that would provide additional support in the business office. The coordinator for business partnership and internships. That is something that I would suggest or encourage that we look at in combination with task. That might be some funding that we can combine the two funding sources and hire one person to do that job at TPS. HR Technology Assistant. That was a position that we had budgeted for to provide additional supports to human resources and also provide some additional support in entering our data to DESI and at the state level. Atlas, the library assistants. Music teacher again is vacant. Taunton Area School to Career. The art teacher, I believe, is a vacant position also. The athletic trainer, I want, we had that lower than the school committee did because we do have a, we do have currently a full-time athletic trainer. This is the second trainer. And this is something that we could bring back at a later time or we could possibly fund outside of our appropriation. Or we could even look at providing additional athletic support in the form of, in the form of Brewster, which we have used for some of our, what we hired. The additional, the additional athletic trainer. So there are other options around that. Library supplies, we've discussed or debated why we felt library supplies would make sense to reduce that line, especially next year, knowing that schools are going to look very different. The registrar position at the welcome center. The computer teachers, again, we have a destination for the students at the middle schools, thanks to Project Lead the Way. So we would make that recommendation that Project Lead the Way take the place of our computer teachers, which in, which Project Lead the Way involves STEM, science, math, engineering, you know, graphic arts. Then unfortunately, coaching for change is something that we believe we could possibly replicate in some way, shape or form for our students at a lower cost. So that was what the leadership team came up with. I also took the liberty of doing a comparison side by side so you can see how things kind of ranked based on what school committee. So we took your list first. So one through 22, based on the weights that you gave each item. Athletic trainer was number one. Director of Grants was 22. And then the LT column is the leadership team. Do you see where the athletic trainer ranks in our order or our priority order? So school committee identified that as a one. Athletic trainer was identified by the leadership team as number 18 out of 22. You do see there are some items that we were close on. So again, assistant payroll, accounts payable. School committee and the leadership team agreed, we had that as a, as a number two priority. Instructional coaches, we had those as a, as a number four priority. And then I also took it, I also looked at it with, where were some of the items that we were within two votes, two priority lists? So we had instructional coaches as a number three in our list. You had instructional coaches at the elementary schools, number five on your list. So you see, we're within two as far as our priorities. Whereas the information services registrar is a separation of five. Now, music teacher, again, you see, there's a difference of eight. You had that as a number seven on your list. We had that as number 15. The test of floats, again, you see, there's only a separation of two. So you had that as number eight on your priority list. We had that ranked as number six. But the registrar at the welcome center number was ranked number nine on the school committee list. We had that as number 20 on our list. The coordinator for business partnerships and relationship, again, very close, 10 and 11 respectively. The testing and team facilitator, again, very close. 11 on your list, number nine on our list. An assistant payroll clerk, number 12 on your list, 10 on our list, and so forth. So again, I can email you these additional documents. Again, I apologize for the short notice. We were, we were waiting for the last document to come in, which came in a little after 2:30. And then there was also an error that we caught that we corrected, which again, impacted the final list. So that is what we worked on, which I think provides us with a solid rationale for items that we would bring back in accordance to any additional funding we receive.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Is that all you have on the superintendent's update?
Yes.
Okay. Because it just seems like it makes sense to go right to C to talk about what you just presented.
Yes.
Okay, so we will go on to see budget priority reading statement. And Mr. Souza is going to facilitate that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to do the same thing we did last week. And that would be take them, take you all in the order of your seating. Only I'm going to start with Carol because it was, it will be my far right. So Ms. Dougherty, you have the first question, please.
Before we start questioning, would it be helpful to keep this sheet visible for members to view?
Yes.
Would you prefer that I, that I stop sharing the screen?
I think we should keep it up there. Does anyone have an objection to that? Keep it up there, Mr. Cabral, please.
It would be helpful to see what the weighted for the leadership team was.
Yeah, the other one.
Yeah, the other one.
Yeah.
Comparison?
Yes, the comparison, keep the comparison up there. I think that's where we're going to have to, that's who, I think that this is where we're going to have to figure out what, what the, what the order is and do a blended version. But Dougherty, go ahead, please.
Oh, well, a comment and then, and then a question. I, I felt when I saw this, and I appreciate where the superintendent and his staff are going with this. But I felt that what you have just presented in terms of the leadership team selections and priorities would have been a better presentation to us. So that the debate and the discussion would have been asking you what the impact is and why, as you presented, you thought that, that number one should be number one and so forth and so on. I, I don't, I don't see where the school committee comes into play here. So some discussion of now what this means going forward in terms of the competing lists, if you will. What are the top eight or nine? The second thing is that the, the conversation going on at the legislative level is still the same as it was a week ago, as it was yesterday. The legislature is still struggling with sources of income and basically saying the bottom line is the federal government. If the federal government and when the federal government releases funds, it will certainly alleviate the municipal difficulties with budgets. And it is true all across the country and of course, the Commonwealth. So I, and given that we have no idea what that will be, unless the department has a different story tomorrow. I'm wondering, and I guess the question to you, superintendent, and to the mayor was asked last night at the city council meeting in terms of, and it's a different kind of question regarding the stabilization fund. It is a question about whether or not there has been a conversation, superintendent, between you and the mayor about the possibility at some time as a supplemental budget in the fall, the use of some stabilization funds to alleviate the cuts that we're experiencing. And I'm, I'm not sure how all of that works and whether it's possible, but I think that it's worth the discussion, at least at our level. And the second thing is with the cuts that we have, the layoffs, many of our folks, if not all of them, are eligible for social security, I'm imagining. And so I'm wondering where the cost for paying the social security lies? How that's divided up? Is it just school committee? Is it school committee and city? Is it state? How does that happen? Thank you, Mr. Souza.
Thank you. I think that I'll have the superintendent answer that question. And let's try to keep to this list now as far as the, he can answer the question on the, you know, where our staff gets, where we get the funding costs for the, we're going to have to kick in a portion of that. But let's try to stick to this list. And maybe what I should do before I go to the next person is answer Ms. Dougherty's questions. And then if you could go through the list again, I don't have a problem with you going through the list again. Go through the list again and give your rationale again for each one of those items, if you don't mind. And if there's anything that we can live without. If there's something, you know, next year is going to be even worse. We're hearing from the Mass Municipal Association, at least I'm hearing through my colleagues in government. And so we need to, we need to make sure that we're able to battle the next storm.
Just, it's unemployment compensation, not social security.
I knew what you meant, but, but, Mr. Cabral, go ahead.
I knew what, I knew what you meant, Mrs. Dougherty. So I'll stop by saying this. Nothing would please me more than to have authorized me to oversee the priority list that we return back to the school department. I mean, I think that would make everyone's life a lot easier if you allowed the, if you authorized the leadership team to use our list as the items that we would return should our funding change. So I just want to, I state that to Mrs. Dougherty, and if that's the wishes of the committee, then I think this would be a really quick meeting. But we, we gave this some thought as far as what we see. And I'm sharing with you my list, which I can go through again after I answer the question. The second question that was asked was unemployment benefits. So I believe 60%, if every employee who does not return to TPS will be charged against the Taunton Public Schools as an indirect cost on the net school spending. So 60% of their salary. So if someone makes $100,000, $60,000 will count against net school spending. And that, and that comes out of the city side, not out of the school department. So that is something to be aware of. So as far as conversations, the mayor and I have had many conversations and we've discussed multiple. And regarding our priority list, so the information services and registrar, so again, the reason why that was number one on our list is because that is a department we've been trying to add additional resources to. We did budget an additional, a part-time person for that position, for that department, by knowing how overwhelmed they can be at times with student management and student data. And this is a time of year where it gets very busy as we begin registering and entering new students. So our online registration is working really well. We had 500 students registered through the portal last week. So what this person does is they verify the accuracy of the information that's being entered into the portal. So that's why this position was rated number one. The accounts pay, assistant payroll accounts payable. So again, another department that we were trying to add additional supports to. So the assistant payroll accounts payable, they spend half their time on payroll, half their time on accounts payable. And again, that department right now would be left with two full-time bookkeepers and two full-time payroll personnel. So this would provide additional supports. And again, very busy time of year. Right now, we are managing or preparing the final payrolls for fiscal '20 while also preparing payrolls for fiscal '21. And also trying to update all our pay cards for fiscal '21. So that is one of the reasons why we feel this position would be advantageous to restore should the funding change. I think the instructional coaches, we've talked about, you know, why they're important. I wouldn't be opposed to having a deeper discussion with the committee and maybe looking at these positions differently. Maybe there's a way to gradually bring them back. And I do want to emphasize that central office will work closely with our principals if and when these positions are returned back to the school department. Level funding salaries, again, if the funding changes and we, and depending on where we go with negotiations with our six unions, you know, that was something that we would, we would bring back. But again, I'm still not opposed. I believe and I'm not going to be taking my pay raise until we are able to figure this out, until we have funding to, you know, bring back as many positions as possible. The test of floats, I already alluded to, this provides additional support in our classrooms should teachers be absent. Again, we don't know what the fall is going to look like. I anticipate we may have some staff members with compromised immune systems or other reasons that will, may not be returning to work. So we will need additional bodies, additional staff members to support the teachers in the buildings as well as administrators. Director of Grants, again, this is something that would support the business office. Again, I'm not opposed, I'm looking at that differently with one of the other positions that we budgeted for, which was the assistant payroll clerk, which is one, two, two below that position. So if we combine those two positions, that's $125,000. We may be able to combine aspects of both jobs into one position. So and still have a savings. The team chairs, we know how important those positions are to Taunton Public Schools. This would allow our guidance counselors to focus on social emotional learning and push into our classrooms, work with our teachers, support our students. Instead of chairing team meetings, which can, which can last as little as 15 minutes. But it's not uncommon for meetings to run as long as two hours. If you have two of those a day, I mean, that can take up a bulk of your time and doesn't provide students with the services they need. But the team and testing facilitator, this person assists the high school with coordinating all the testing, the state testing that takes place at the high school, as well as, you know, PSATs, SATs and other testing. And also helps to coordinate and chair team meetings at the high school. So again, it allows the high school guidance counselors to focus on getting our seniors, you know, prepared for college and doing all that additional work that we know takes place at the high school. Assistant payroll clerk, again, not a, that was a newly budgeted position. It's vacant. That would provide additional support to the business office. The coordinator for business partnerships and internships, as we've talked about, I can see that position being combined with the task membership fee that we pay for $125,000. Where we could possibly hire our own in-house person and still recoup a savings and still receive the benefit of the, of the internships that those, that that position or those positions provide us. HR Technology Assistant, that was to provide additional support to HR and also to the IT department with student and data management. And also provide the HR department with additional support. Atlas houses our curriculum. We are, we are probably about a year away from migrating over to a free web-based platform. Our library assistance, again, we've talked about why next year we believe this makes sense, as we don't see libraries being utilized, especially at the elementary school level. As I believe elementary school students will maybe ask to remain in their school, their classrooms the entire day. Or there'll be very limited movement where you may see people pushing into the classrooms versus kids going to that destination for specials. The music teacher, again, I believe was a, was a vacant position, which we did, which we were able to cover with the existing staff. Taunton Area School to Career, we've talked about that at length. The art teacher, again, Mr. Barata was able to work with the existing staff and able to cover that point five position. The athletic trainer is one of two. So we can get by with one. And as we learn what the fall will look like, the squats will be played in the fall. That is something we can address a couple of different ways as well. Library supplies would make sense not to budget for library supplies. The registrar, the welcome center, we've discussed in previous conversations. I explained why the computer teachers make sense, thanks to Project Lead the Way. And unfortunately, coaching for change, that may be something that we can provide at a later date differently. And again, not knowing what the school day or after school is going to look like and knowing the pressure that our custodians will be under to clean our schools. I want to make sure that after school, when we're done, that our custodial staff will work the evenings, have ample time to clean our classrooms, disinfect our buildings without interference from students, staff and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. I'm going to continue on now with, you have any, do you have any more to add to that before I have the committee members ask questions?
No, that, that's all. I hope that satisfies Mrs. Dougherty's questions and the rest of the.
I think it's good, I think it's good for all of us. Sounds like Ms. Dougherty, I think, is very happy with that answer. So Ms. Dougherty asked the first question. Please let me, let me your questions to one on the first round and we'll just continue to go around until everyone's having a few questions. Could I, Mr. Cabral, could you put the comparison back up, please? I think, I think that's also helpful. Thank you. Next will be Mr. Palowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Through you to Mr. Cabral. So I, my first question is going to be around the libraries. So I guess it's a combined question on the library assistance and the library supplies. So I know that in the district, we have subscription services that allow our students access to, you know, online books, online materials. So which is very important in remote learning or hybrid learning. Are any of those subscriptions tied in any way to the line item for library supplies or to whether or not we've got actual library assistance in the libraries? Or are we still, or if we lose both of these line items, will we still be able to maintain all of our online subscriptions?
I'd have to, I'd have to double check because I want to say those subscriptions, Mr. Palowski, may fall on the contracted services. So Mr. Barata is here with me. So he does oversee libraries and he's mentioning that we would be able to maintain those subscriptions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. And thank you, Brenda.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Mr. Fiore?
Contracted services.
Thank you. I have to say that my priorities are very close to the school committee list, except that I would not have put the athletic trainer as high because I just see some real uncertainty about how extensive fall sports are going to be. And I'm wondering if we can't delay hiring the, the second trainer because we may not have as much call for the position. Other than that, I feel strongly that we ought to at least be doing something with the libraries, even if maybe it's a reduced number. I'm getting a lot of feedback from teachers that they feel the existence of the library is a big help in disciplining the reading habits of children. Also going back to my days in the city side of government, my early days on the council, when they discontinued the branch public libraries. And the trustees of the public library at the time said that they wanted to put more resources into the central public library because they felt neighborhood use for reading was being covered by the schools. And I'm really concerned about access to materials. And also we have a lot of library assistants who have a lot of seniority. But because of the nature of their positions, they don't have very much security. So I, I'd really like to see us do more with the libraries because I'm just hearing that there's more demand for them. And I think regardless of what the social distancing protocols are going to be, that it's still a needed service. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Mr. Cabral, if you have any comments on any of this, just let me know and as we're going along. Thank you. Mrs. Fagan?
As far as the athletic trainer is concerned, the reason I put it up high is because, as I explained last week, we needed those for certain sports. We can't always coordinate schedules so that Chris can be there for all these kids. And we have to have somebody that goes away when the football team goes away, if, if there's some other activity at the high school. But still erroneously, we paid $30,000 last year and it's still showing 61,200, which isn't what we paid. So I take an objection to that. But I don't think, from what I'm hearing, I'm not sure if they're going to allow too many fall sports this year. So I'm not sure where that leads us. But I think there was somebody they called when needed. So I think we ought to look and see how, how that actually went through. As far as some of this other stuff, I worry about, you know, I think we have to keep a lot of these people in here and Some of this other stuff, I worry about, you know, I think we have to keep a lot of these people in here in case. We have to go into splitting up classes because none of us know what, what it looks like, I agree with Mrs. Almeida. We, if, if we at least had some direction, we're just kind of flapping out there in the wind, we really don't know what we're going to need too much of. Some of these things, I think if they involve buses, we're going to have a problem with that also, so I, I wish we could just. Look at these things a little bit closer and, and I'd actually like to see some of these job descriptions again. Like the team and testing facilitator, facilitator, what was the job description about that? I, I heard Mr. Cabral talking about colleges and stuff, I thought that's why we had Jen Andrews doing that. So I'm not sure where these, some of these other things can't, can be combined with what. I mean, who used to do it before we had a team and testing facilitator?
Yeah, if I could, if I could answer that second part, Mrs. Fagan, so the team and testing facilitator. What I, and if I, again, if I misspoke, I apologize. What the team and testing facilitator does is they work with the high school guidance department to schedule. Team meetings, first year evaluations and then the three-year evals. Initial and the three-year evals, they schedule those meetings and they chair those meetings. So that our guidance counselors can do the guidance work, which means working with our seniors. To help them get ready for college, to go through that process. So this position frees up our guidance counselors at the high school to do guidance work. This position also works with the assistant headmaster to schedule testing. All the MCAS testing at the high school, PSAT, SAT testing. And I think I'm missing some other testing, but this position also helps with the scheduling and doing all the prep work. To administer the testing, so again, so it frees up Mrs. Keenan to focus on curriculum and instruction, so that's what this position does.
And that's what's in the job description?
Did I miss anything, Mrs. Mitchell? Mrs. Mitchell is, Attorney Mitchell is telling me that that pretty much sums up her job description.
All right, the director of grants, you have that up pretty high. I was reading today in one of the papers that was at my house that. A lot of these places that would provide grants, they're all struggling right now with money and because nobody's got any money. So I'm, I'm not so sure that that's going to be something that we're going to have a lot for the people to do with. I mean, I know you, you didn't take the health grant this year, right? You didn't apply for it from, for the school department, right?
Yeah, as I said, going through, and I, I don't disagree with you, Mrs. Fagan. I think what might be a good opportunity for us would be to look at the grant position at eighty-five thousand. And look at the Assistant Payroll Clerk at forty thousand, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars there. Combining those two positions, maybe hiring one person at a less, lower cost, so we, we would see a savings. And we could get the benefit of having someone oversee grants while providing some additional financial support. Or possibly facility support for the Tom Public School. So there may be a way to, you know, combine positions, be more efficient with those funds should the funding increase, so I don't disagree with you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Suza, I went over one question, I'll.
I lost count.
Like, so you're.
Yeah, I just, oh, sorry.
A point of information, Madam Chair.
Yeah, Mrs. Doherty.
Just, thank you. On the director of grants, I was under the impression that that person also wrote grants, not just oversaw them, will you define, please?
Great, great question, so as someone who worked very closely with that position as a principal and also as the assistant superintendent of finance and operations. The way we write our grants is we do have somebody who manages the grant, so when I was at Friedman, I used to manage or oversee. The human service grant, which was about two hundred and twenty thousand. So I would help write the grant or provide information to the director of grants to help write the grant. So I would provide all my, all my student information, my school information, all the background information that the grant requires. And the director of grants would compile all that information and then also add specific language that. People who are the folks or organizations that award the grants are looking for. So they, they knew the, the language that they were looking, that somebody overseeing or approving the grant would want to see. And they would make sure it was added in there, but a bulk of the work as far as writing the grant, and again, not to minimize the position. Bulk of the work was done with the people who are soliciting or, people who are writing or looking to acquire the grant. So for example, Dala Haatung with the Path Raise Grant, she provided a bulk of that information. And then the director of grants at the time would synthesize it and put it in a coherent form. That would make sense for the people who are approving the grant at the state level.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cabral, Mrs. Fagan, are you all set?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Next I'm going to ask, Mr. Martin, do you have any questions?
My question is more of a suggestion. Obviously, the school committee has put a lot of time and effort into this in the past week. The leadership team likewise. My suggestion is, why don't we narrow this down? For example, I think we're all on the same page when it comes to the second item. We're all on the same page when it comes to the fourth item. We're very close when it comes to the item on the fifth line. My suggestion would be to create a third column. And take those. Items that either the delta is zero, the difference, the difference is zero, one or two, and see what that looks like. I think that's going to cut your twenty-two items down to probably ten or twelve left over and then go from there. And again, the reason I say that is because. Two different sides, so to speak, leadership team, school committee, have really come to some sort of agreement on. Seven or eight of these items where they are exactly the same or they differ by one or two. As far as their ranking goes, so that's my suggestion.
Mr. Martin, I must have been a business manager in a previous life because I did that same analogy, anything that was within a delta of two.
By the way, I didn't talk to him earlier.
No, but, but I did that and I have, I mean, I have the document here, it was scratch work that we were working on in my office. So if you were to look at anything that you all agreed on or that we agreed on. The two, the two items would be the assistant payroll accounts payable, the instructional coaches. And anything with a delta of two or less would be the instructional coaches at the elementary school. Again, five and three. The test of float assistants, eight and six. The coordinator for business partnerships, ten and eleven. The testing and team facilitator, eleven and nine. The assistant payroll clerk, twelve and ten. And the art teacher, fifteen and seventeen, those would be the top eight items. And then everything else, there, there was a pretty wide ranging gap between us and the school committee.
Obviously, the art teacher's been taken care of, I think you said Mr. Barada's been able to handle that. We, that would take care of quite a few items on that list.
Right, so that would cover, that would make, that would be our top eight list, our top eight priority list.
It just cuts the list down because again, both sides have basically agreed to those items. And I don't mean to say sides, but I'm talking about school committee, leadership team being on the same page. That's all I have, Mr. Suza, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, I think that's a good, I think that's a good start, we're going to continue with questions and I may go back to you so we can set. Maybe hash this out once we get around a couple of times, so keep them figures in your head, Mr. Martin, I know they don't leave very often. Mrs. Almeida, you're next.
Because there was agreement, that's one reason.
Thank you. Well, I based my. Analysis on what we had, I didn't think we were going to be hiring new staff. So anything, any positions that were new, I put on the bottom of this. But it looks like now we're going to be hiring some new people to fill positions. One of the things that I thought that was important, that we look at the dollar amount to see if we were going to have the amount of money. To put back into the budget. And when I was giving our. Priority list here, I had asked if we could have the dollar amount because I think that is going to base. Our decisions whether we have the money to fund these positions or not. And I think it would have also been very helpful if we knew that the leadership team was going to be doing the same thing that we were doing, so we could have. Kind of sat and hashed out our priorities. So my question is, how much money can we bring back? That's key.
That's the sixty.
We can say we agree, we agree on phonex opens, but if we don't have money for phonex opens, we can't do that. So how much money can we actually bring back?
That's a good question, how, how, how we got to phase it in is what you're saying, Mr. Cabral.
Yeah, this, these positions would be phased in based on chapter seventy increase. Which we don't know.
How much is chapter seventy-two, something?
You don't, a, a very conservative estimate would be thirty percent reduction. To the governor's budget, which would be two and a half million dollars.
Two and a half million dollars.
Which would get us pretty, pretty much probably through the instructional coaches. Maybe a little bit below, maybe, maybe to the music teacher or the information services registrar. If you went strictly on your priorities.
What I'm saying is, I want what's best for the school department. I want what's best for the children. And. We've had a lot of conversations and. I, I don't know where I'm going now, so I'll defer to other people. I, I just feel that if the budget's our priority, then we need to spend more time on deciding what we're bringing back, not bringing back. Having a little bit more discussions on things. Because if we have positions on the, on those top priority lists that don't exist now. We didn't have them before, so why do we need them now? We didn't have that assistant payroll work, now everybody put a two. I think that was my number eight, because that position never existed, this is what I'm trying to say. If something didn't exist, why would we be hiring somebody? To go into a position. And have someone else be without a job? I'd like to know what positions on that list do not exist now.
Yeah, so.
That would make my life a little bit easier to make a conscious decision. I don't want to be hiring new people when we're letting people not have jobs.
So the assistant payroll accounts payable, there is a person in that position.
There is.
There is, I think you're, I think you may be confusing or mixing. Number twelve on your list, Mrs. Almeida, the assistant payroll clerk, that was a newly budgeted position that is currently vacant.
Okay, so the assistant payroll clerk accounts payable exists today?
Yes.
Okay, and the team testing facility, does that?
Yes.
Exists today?
Yes. Assistant payroll clerk vacant. HR Technology Assistant is vacant. The team chairs vacant. Director of Grants has been vacant since right around the time the pandemic started, maybe a little. And the music teacher is vacant, correct, Mr.? The music teacher, and the music teacher has been vacant since around the time the pandemic started also.
Okay, so the top five of top seven, eight, whatever choices they may be. Those positions are all in existence now.
They all existed, correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral, thank you, Mrs. Almeida. I, you know, the only I'm going to say is, just keep in mind that the leadership team. Is, has to do the day-to-day operations, so there may be something that they see that we're not catching and that it's up to them to educate us. But, you know, we have to put some weight into that too, that, what, what they see in the day-to-day. Thank you, Mrs. Almeida, Mr. DeBello, sorry for the delay.
It's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going anywhere. So Mr. Cabral, through the chairman, of course, the leadership team, were you part of those results? Are you in that mix?
Yes.
Okay, how many total, including you, are part of the leadership team?
Six.
Six, okay, so I, I think right up there, I don't think it's a comparison we should be even looking at. We have eight school committee members, you have six, so two additional. People or percentages or whatever we want to call this, I don't think is a comparative analysis. Where I'm going with that is, we also started with a three to four million dollar deficit. The list in front of us represents almost five point nine million dollars. So I'm struggling with that too. So I think, I, I'll have some other follows around too. So where I'm leading this, with, with this, is that I think like Mrs. Fagan says, we're doing all this, we're doing all this. Time and energy, we don't know where we stand come September. My priority will be teachers in the classroom, support services for these students. Because if it's going to turn out the way I think it's going to turn out, we're going to need those folks in the classroom. So anything to do outside the classroom is not going to be a priority. And I think we have to understand that and going forward, this list of twenty-two items could be totally. Misrepresented, I mean, we, we definitely know that, you know, let's say task, for example, is low on, on, on the school committee's list. Wouldn't influence the child in the classroom, the student in the classroom, I think that's a priority that we should be considering. So I want to yield here and I'll come up with some questions that I really need answered on round two, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello, and I just have one question, Mr. Cabral. On the, you know, there's some debate about the library, the library. The library, they're not librarians, but the librarian, library assistants, and then we have the test of floats. You know, if we're going, if there's a possibility we're going either fully remote or a hybrid remote. Could we, could we, can, can we float, do we have to have all of them, I mean. Library assistants. If, if we go to fully remote, what are they going to do the whole day? That's my, that's, that's, that's my big question.
Again, if we went, it was, I don't anticipate unless, I mean, based on the data that we heard today in the city, we're around three hundred and eighty. Active COVID-nineteen cases, so the data is trending down. So I would anticipate tomorrow's call with the commissioner, we're going to learn that's going to be some type of a blended model. So having the educational float assistants, as I stated earlier, will be helpful to support the instruction in the classroom. Or to cover for teachers, should they be absent or should we need coverage in, in other areas? So I think the floaters would provide a needed service in our blended model. The library assistants, again, I, I'm not trying to minimize their value or what they bring to the schools. But I'm also trying to think of this with a lens towards the future, not knowing what the school's going to look like. Everything we're hearing is at the lower levels, they're really going to try to limit mobility, limit movement. The older kids would be the ones moving and probably with masks, some kind of face shield to, to protect those around them. So I don't see kids visiting libraries and based on what we're hearing as far as different numbers in a classroom. We may need our libraries to serve as expanded classroom spaces. We may need our gyms to serve as expanded classroom spaces. So again, these are all things we need to be prepared for. We don't know if the guidance is going to say students have to be ten feet apart, six feet apart, five feet apart, five feet, five feet apart. What that means is you're not going to be able to squeeze twenty-five kids, thirty kids into a classroom, we're going to need additional space.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I was, I was thinking the library assistants and the test of floats, I mean. We could use the floats as, if they had to go to live, but I don't see elementary doing that at all. We have a librarian at the high school who's full-time librarian, which is not part of this, so that means just a middle school, a free middle school, so. I, I'm all for the libraries, but I certainly think that we need to be wise as far as. Who we're going to have come back and who we're not going to have come back. And that's, that's all I have right now. Mayor, do you have any questions on any of this right now, if I go to, when I go to round two? You're ending along.
You can go to round two, thank you, David.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm going to go now, we're going to use another questions, Q and A, that would be Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, you're doing a fine job. It's like herding cats, so a couple of comments and then a question. The expanded classroom space, it seems to me, will require more personnel, not less. And what I don't see on this list, because we're all saying teachers and classrooms and teaching and learning are the priority. What I see on the list is, didn't get very high marks, but the, the pay freeze for our staff. We've pretty much sent out about two hundred pink slips in the overall across the unions and yet. None of those are on this list, certainly if the two hundred positions that were laid off were on this list, that would be my number one. Priority based on what we consider to be critical and important in terms of going back. The second thing is, much like my colleagues, we don't have a re, a completed re-entry plan. The second thing is, much like my colleagues, we don't have a re, a completed reentry plan at this point in time. The superintendent has alluded to several different areas that aren't going forward because we would not be participating in that activity, whatever that might be. The libraries, for example, the example that occurs to me, athletics, which is not on this list at all, but was on our previous list. So, yeah, it's, it goes on like that. And we're all in the muddle in basically the same way. So the question that I come to superintendent, when I ask the question about whether or not you and the mayor have had conversations about the stabilization fund, the possibility of a supplemental budget come the fall, those kinds of things. Again, all depending on what happens in terms of Chapter 70 money, but you alluded to the fact that you've had several conversations. Would you share some of the information that you think would impact our thinking in terms of this list and other concerns that we have?
So the mayor, the mayor and I have met with the city budget manager or the city finance manager. And we talked about, I shared with the mayor some other scenarios that I've learned, heard have taken place in other communities. Share those suggestions during that meeting. And we did talk about the Chapter 70 and what the projections we had learned from DESI may look like as far as being level funded at the FY '20 rate plus the inflation factor of 1.99%. We discussed the Chapter 70 figure reduced by 20%. And we've also discussed the Chapter 70 figure reduced by 30%. So at a 30% reduction, it'd be about two and a half million dollars. At a 20% reduction, Chapter 70 would look at around $2.9 million. And if you level funded Chapter 70 at the FY '20 rates plus the 1.99% inflation factor, we'd look at about $2.8 million in Chapter 70. That's what, that's what we're, that's what I am projecting, Mrs. Moynihan, is projecting that we'll be receiving from the state, hopefully sometime sooner than later, so that we can address this priority list. And I do have calls, and this is Moynihan as well. We will be reaching out, we continue to reach out to Jay Sullivan at DESI to try to pin DESI down as far as what we can anticipate as a reasonable projection for Chapter 70 for fiscal '21. And I, I am grateful to learn, to hear that the $88, $2 million that the city will be appropriating to the school department for fiscal '21. We can expect that plus whatever the Chapter 70 increase is. So knowing that, it's very good news to time, because as I stated in several of our budget presentations, right now, the city is at 101% net school spending. So they do not have to allocate an additional dollar for the town public schools. But knowing that they will commit the full Chapter 70 increase to the school department in addition to the 88, too, to me, will go a long way in helping to, helping TPS to provide the services needed to our students and staff and families.
Thank you. Well, yeah, that's certainly our intention. And, and I will just add that what we really need to count on is our legislative delegation to advocate for funding for Chapter 70 and also for locally UGGA aid. Because that is most certainly on the chopping block before Chapter 70 is. And the other thing that our legislative delegation can advocate for is for the House of Representatives to at least give us a floor in Chapter 70 funding, which we, when I was in the legislature, asked for for many years. And even in normal years, they were hesitant to do that. But that would greatly help every community across Massachusetts if they would at least tell us the floor that they can give us, because that should be a number that they can come up with.
Yeah, just thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for that. I, I think that you head in the right direction with those comments. The, I can, can say that the legislature is pretty much, that's the first thing they ever talk about when we're talking about budget is Chapter 70 funding and trying to figure that out across the Commonwealth. So I'll take that back to the conversation. I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sousa.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Appreciate the information and the questions. Mr. Polowski, do you have a question on round two?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Through you to Mr. Cabral. So this is, this is kind of a loaded question. But the big-ticket items that are on this list, do we have the ability to, to break them out so that they're not just one line item? So exactly what Mrs. Dougherty was talking about, the level funded salaries, right now, currently, that, that represents quite a few actual teaching positions. And I, I don't see how we could put any of those positions behind some of the other line items on, on this list. But since it's all wrapped into one $2.4 million line item, it makes it kind of hard to prioritize. And then similarly, you've got the instructional coaches and you've got the library assistants. That's all wrapped into one line item. But there's certainly ways to break that down to at least give us some coverages across the school. And I'm sure there's many different inventive ways that you and your leadership team could come up with. So in the scope of, I guess, the timeframe in which we need to make this decision and put this in order, do we have the ability to break that stuff down and see a bit more granularity?
Yes. Yeah, everything that you've discussed, Mr. Polowski, everything that you mentioned, that's, those are all items or topics that we've discussed at our level as well as with our principals. So I think if we can't bring all 16 library assistants back for some reason, then maybe we look at sharing library assistants of how we can bring those back to provide some support or some services to our schools. So ideally, I'd love to see every position reinstated in our budget. Unfortunately, that's not the situation that we're in now. So I think we need to be creative. I think we need to think strategically. And then I also think we need to plan long-term. How can we gradually begin to phase some of these positions in over a period of time? If we feel it's warranted to come back, or can we combine funds, like I suggested, with the director of grants in the business office position, and maybe get additional services by combining both? So I think everything would be on the table. I think what's important to do now is to come up with a list. And then as the funding comes in, then we can have that healthy conversation, debate about what we do or how we can maximize those dollars to provide coverage across all our schools.
Okay, thank, thank you. But I, I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is, would it be helpful to us before we actually vote and make a decision or finalize some sort of a list, if we had some of those options to choose from? So rather than working off a list that's in front of us, could we have some of those combined alternative positions? Or, you know, rather than the library assistants being shown as 16, being broken down into multiple units? Because I, I think some of us might say that we would want to have, you know, at least some instructional coaches at the schools rather than all of them before other positions. So is that, and I don't, I guess I'm doing a bad job of explaining it. But likewise, all, all the positions, if.
Maybe I'm doing a bad job of answering it. So I'll, I'll take some ownership there. I think what would make sense, just again, based on experiences, once we know what the money situation is, then we can look at the list and come up with different scenarios, saying if we receive, say, $2.6 million, well, this is what we can do for $2.6 million. Maybe we bring back half the library assistants. Maybe we bring back, no, half the coaches to try to stretch, again, stretch those dollars to try to cover as many of these positions as possible. I think that would be, that would make sense, knowing what the money situation is and then coming back and looking at our priority list and then trying to tackle it in a way that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polowski. And I think that's the key right there, is that from what I'm seeing, and he's coming up in a couple of, in a little bit, it's Mr. Martin, what I'm seeing is, if we're talking about the Chapter 70 increase being two and a half, 2.6, 2.7, that means out of this list, we're only going to be able to do 2.6, 2.7. Whatever that two point, whatever it is, two and a half, let's say two and a half, that means that, so as Mr. Cabral, Mr. Polowski was alluding to, we need to stretch those. So you're right, we need to break those out. So I'm almost wondering if we get to the end here, if we just forget about the figures and prioritize the positions and then we can stretch out, maybe instead of eight, we go to six or four and things like that. Thank you. Mr. Fiori, do you have any questions for round two?
Well, comments really. First of all, I'm going to cause Representative Dougherty to faint dead away because I'm going to tell her that I totally agree with her top priority, that the first thing we need to do is work on bringing back pink slip teachers. That's never a question to me. I also have to concur with Mr. Polowski. I've always advocated keeping at least some library assistants and some instructional coaches, but I think those could be reduced. And in terms of the, the question of having to use the physical library space for classrooms, that may be true. But I think we can still set up stations with librarians who can still assist with the reading skills that, what library assistants deal with. Discussion of stabilization, it's by understanding you can't use stabilization money for a regular appropriation at the beginning of the year. You can use it for things like capital and supply expenses, and you can use it to bail out funds toward the end of the year. And I think any discussions in trying to tap other reserves that the city might have should center on some of these supply items. I know we had about a million dollars worth of supplies that we thought were jeopardizing positions. They didn't get, end up getting cut initially, but we should maybe look at getting those funded that way. Another thing to that music teacher position, it happens that the teacher resigned just before. The fact is, it's, it was one teacher who was assigned to two schools. And he resigned because he had some issues with classroom management and with administrative support for his classroom management. So I think that position, just because of where it's located and what it's been, that, that needs to be filled. The art thing that we have there, that was only a halftime position, that can be filled with coverage. But I don't think that particular music position because of where it is can be just filled by coverage. I think that needs to be dealt with. But I certainly agree. We can deal with the library space issues. Otherwise, we can deal with some of these positions by funding part of them. And totally agree that pink slip teachers are the number one priority.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori. Before I go to Mrs. Fagan, I just want to remind my colleagues, please do not talk about personnel matters during an open public meeting. That we just, that's just not, I'm not talking about the previous person, I'm just talking about in general. Please don't talk about specific personnel matters in an open meeting. This is, after this round, by the way, after round two, I'm going, we're going to talk, we're going to try to get specific on what, what we, on the ranking and move forward here. So I want to try to get to some, some words of resolution on this tonight, you know, after the second round here. Mrs. Fagan?
Yeah, I, I just want to make a comment, and it's not so much about this, it's about the budget in general. I look at these, this list here, and this is a really small part of a very immense budget that we have with the school department. And last week, I had asked you, Mr. Cabral, to explain about, you know, what you could use from what's left over money and all that stuff. And we still don't have the figures on what we didn't expend, like the athletic fee, because we didn't have any athletics at the end, end of the year. But my question is, if, when you, how, how often during the year, oh, excuse me. How often during the year do you review the budget to see exactly where we are? And at what point did you realize that we might have some shortfalls in the budget? Because now we're looking to, to trim it down even more. I just wonder what the process is that, how you do that.
Yeah, so Mrs. Moynihan and I meet pretty regularly to talk about the budget and to analyze the budget. We work very closely when we put together the budget updates, the revolving update, and the grant updates that we provide you quarterly. I'm constantly checking Soft Right to see where, where we are with the budget, as well as Mrs. Moynihan. She'll come down and meet with me individually. That's not uncommon. I'll go upstairs and meet with her individually and talk about items in the budget. So it, it's something that, again, I have a lot of experience with. It's something that I keep a close eye on with Mrs. Moynihan. So, yeah, we, we meet, just like I do with members of my media, my leadership team. I meet with them regularly to talk about the areas that they oversee, that they're responsible for, that I'm ultimately responsible for.
Right, but at one, one point, you said there were some shortfalls. You, you had to transfer money to cover other things. So I, my question is, you know, are we going over the budget in such a way now? Are we crafting this next budget so we don't have that happen again? And I don't know where the shortfalls were, because nobody's told us. But you said there was some, and you had to do some transferring. And I worry about, are we going to lock ourselves in this, the same thing again, where we're looking to, to make all these cuts, which are painful for everybody?
Yeah, the one, the one anomaly that we had this year would have been our out-of-district student placements. So again, you, I mean, I won't get too deep into the weeds, but you do remember that some members of the school committee went before the TEA in a forum held at the high school to hear about the social emotional needs and the additional supports that are needed for our students. So we do, we did see a spike, an uptick in students going out of districts because they were not being successful. And they were not able to access the curriculum, or they weren't able to receive the social emotional support that they needed in the classroom. So we did see an uptick in students going out of district. We did put in, we did put in a supplemental budget request prior to Sean O'Connell taking over as mayor. That was not approved. That would, that would have helped. But that would be the primary area where we, where we saw an uptick would have been an out-of-district placement. And I also do want to reiterate, and again, this was supported by the city's budget manager. So in most municipalities, you don't, especially when you are hovering right around 100% net school spending. When you're hovering around 100% net school spending and return funds to the city, you actually may drop them below net school spending. And then that, that carries forward next year. So if you think back to about six or eight years ago, we were always talking about the credit card debt that kept rolling over because the city was under 100%.
Right, yes, I do.
So again, that's one of the reasons why I'll continue to advocate that we spend on our appropriation. We be very frugal with our reserves, knowing that we're going to need them for fiscal '22.
Well, I'm just wondering if, if that's an area that we might just have to put more money, because we never know what's going to happen there. That's, and I, and I understand that's always been an issue. I think if people try to be conservative, but sometimes you just have years that those things happen.
Yeah.
I was just curious as to what it was and how we address something like that, so we don't have to go through this.
And it's usually, usually in April that we start to get a good sense on what lines we're going to go over or we're going to be under. And that's when Mrs. Moynihan, myself, in the past, would make the request of the Finance and Law Committee to authorize the administration to balance out any lines that may be in deficit and to use any additional funding from the current fiscal year to pre-buy supplies or prepaid tuition for the following fiscal year.
Okay.
Been doing that since 2010 and probably since Mr. Martin was in the business office.
Yep, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll send, Mr. Sousa. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Next, we're going to call on Mr. Martin. Are you ready for round two, Mr. Martin?
I'm going to go in a different direction for a minute. When Mr. Cabral gave his preliminary budget PowerPoint series, talked about a shortfall. It was about $3.8 million, somewhere in that vicinity. I don't have it in front of me. And in some of the calls I've been getting, people are saying, why are we cutting over $6 million if he only had to cut 3.8 to 3.9 million? And the answer to that is, of the 22 items on that list, we have control of 21 of them. We don't, at this point in time, have control of level fund salaries. So if that doesn't happen, you take the 2.4 million off the $6 million that I just mentioned, you're down to what Mr. Cabral had presented at that preliminary budget hearing. In other words, we would have to cut the other 21 items on this list. So I just wanted to clear that up, because I know some people are saying, whoa, what's the number? You know, one time you say it's 3.8, why are you cutting 6 million if it's only 3.? You know, one time you say it's 3.8, why are you cutting $6 million if it's only 3.8? As I said, we have control of 21 of those 22 items. We do not have control of one of them. And if that doesn't happen, and that's, you know, that's negotiable, then the other 21 items on this list would be, would make up that $3.8 million. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you. I'm not going to ask any more questions, because quite frankly, I'm not prepared to cast a vote this evening based on what we have in front of us. There's too many variables here as to how much money we're going to actually get. When are we going to get it? Whether, Mr. Martin just said the exact same thing, whether that $2.4 million is going to be level-funded. It's just too many variables to sit here and think about what we're bringing back, what we're not bringing back, until we know exactly what we have. Then I can sit here and make a conscious decision. Right now, I do not feel I can make a conscious decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. Demello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually thinking like Mrs. Almeida, exactly. And if we are expected to have a vote tonight on this, is that correct? Is that the outcome?
Well, I think that that's reasonable. And we cut last week, so we were planning on reinstating or prioritize. This is a prioritized list. So, you know, it could change depending on the funding. You know, if it's only $2.5 million on chapter 70 increase, then that's what we have to live by. And then the superintendent would probably come back and say, yeah, we can only afford three instructional coaches, four library assistants, and things like that. So this is basically just a rank order of what we'd like to come back. And I can already picture that some of this is probably not going to come back, because the way we're talking for money, unless they're printing it at Beacon Hill.
Sure.
But anyway, some, if possible, I mean, it doesn't have to be. I mean, we don't have the money yet.
Yeah, thank you for that, Mrs. Souza. So I'm going to actually agree with Mrs. Almeida and all my colleagues tonight. All make some valid points. Mr. Martin, Mrs. Fagan, Mrs. Dougherty, everybody down the list, Mr. Palowski, Mr. Fiore. I'm not going to be voting on this tonight, absolutely not. If we are taking a vote, I'm not going to support it. So I won't ask any more questions, because I don't think they're even necessary at this point in time. All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Demello. At this time, Madam Mayor, you have anything to say on round two?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
I think at this point, I'm going to ask for any suggestions, any motions on the floor, any wishes of my colleagues. So, Mr. Cabral, do you have one last thing, a last thing to say before I open it to my colleagues?
Chairman?
Does Mrs. Almeida want to make her comment before I give my comment?
Is that a comment, Mrs. Almeida?
I do, but I'll refer to the superintendent if I can speak after him.
Yes, yes. Mr. Cabral, go ahead, and then I'll go ask for any questions by hand. Thank you.
So again, I want to just say, I appreciate the thoughtfulness, and I appreciate the insight that you are providing me and the leadership team regarding this process, which we know is not fun. And I think you are, you are all right. You don't know how much money we will be receiving, if any. And we don't know the timeline, which is very, very difficult for us to try to do all this planning. But what would be helpful for me and my administration would be to know where you stand as far as the positions, the priorities you would like to see returned, should the funding come in, either at a low level or a high level. That would be very helpful for us to present or provide different scenarios based on those different projections. So with that said, I'm prepared either way. We're going to keep showing up to work. We're going to keep doing the work and providing you with the different scenarios and different outcomes that we feel make sense based on what we anticipate for dollars. But again, it would be helpful for us to know where you stand as far as what you want to see returned. So that way, when the funding does come in, we'll know what to bring back. Because I anticipate when we do know the funding, it's going to be additional meetings. I don't think it'll be one meeting. I think it'll be additional meetings. And then depending on when this funding does come back, we may be pressed to start the school year. I mean, where I, this DESI, just to put it out there, DESI just extended the SOA timeline, the Student Opportunity Act. The deadline is August 18th. So my sense is, they're probably anticipating having some budget figures, because as the Student Opportunity Act plan is tied to funding. So I would think that they are anticipating funding being made available around that time. And that puts us two weeks out to bring these positions back. So when we post it for 10 days, you interview, and then you get these people into the positions, it's going to be very disruptive, not only to the leadership team, the principals, who are going to be doing the hiring and the interviewing and bringing folks back. And so it's going to be disruptive to the start of the school year. So that's why it'd be helpful to know earlier what we're planning so that we can get a leg, get a head start on what needs to be done. But again, I can live with either way. You do oversee the finances. You do have control of the finances. And we'll do whatever the wishes of the committee are.
I can't see hands, so I'm just going to quickly go around the, around the, around the.
You told me as soon as the superintendent spoke, I could speak.
Hold on, Mrs. Almeida, I got to find you.
Right here.
Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Almeida.
Okay. Given the fact that we, as school committee members, have three major roles that we do. We set policy, hire and fire the superintendent, and oversee the budget. The budget's a big part of what we do. And to make a decision based on no concrete facts, in my opinion, is ridiculous. So I would ask to table this until we know how much money we're going to get. Thank you.
Second.
There's no discussion on the motion to table. There's no discussion on the motion to table. So there will be no discussion. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll on the motion to table. And the motion was to table the callback, this allocation list. There's no discussion. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
You're on mute, Mrs. Fagan.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Shut it down. Thank you. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Yes to table?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan?
I'm on the table. Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Demello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Okay.
The motion passes. Madam Mayor, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to you, because that was a motion to table the budget priority reinstatement. So we're now on to D. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. So we are now on to critical items, not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance. Anyone? Okay. Do I see a hand? I waited too long. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I guess this is the right time. So could I ask through you to Mr. Cabral, since we've tabled the discussion, in the meantime, can we get all the details that you shared with us and emailed to us, ideally in an Excel spreadsheet, of the leadership team's priorities? And if possible, if you get any ideas about how any of those items could be broken down, combined, or whatever? Because while I agree, we certainly don't have enough information to make our decision today, I still feel like we could make some sort of an ordered priority before we technically know how much money we have. Because our priorities and what we need is not going to change based on the money. The money is just going to tell us how much of that we can bring back. So I would definitely like to, as soon as we can, get as much information as we can to even begin making an informed decision. Thank you.
We'll work on that, and I think we have that in the 7-1 packet. So that'll be the first meeting in July. That'll give us a couple of weeks to provide you with those, with that information.
And I'll have a discussion with Mr. Cabral about strategies on things like that, to make sure that everyone, anyone has any other ideas they want to add in, how they can break it out. I was going to say that during this, but I wanted everyone to have questions for this. So that's exactly what I was thinking, Mr. Palowski. And I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, for jumping, because I see a couple of other hands in there.
Sure. Mrs. Fagan?
Yeah, I would appreciate having that come in, in a packet, because I can't, I don't have the ability to print anymore here. And I like to have papers in front of me so I can lay them all out in front. So I would definitely appreciate the packet, and I'll even go pick it up. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Dougherty, did you have your hand up?
Yes, just a suggestion that, over the course of the weeks when we have been deliberating, there have been many different kinds of suggestions about places in the budget that we might give closer scrutiny. And I don't know that that has happened as yet. So I would recommend that you do do that, Superintendent, that some of the suggestions that are made may be useful and some of them may not, but to address them, because I think that they're given in good faith, whether those suggestions have come from members of the committee or members of the public, I think they're worth looking at. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We'll give the budget another look.
Okay, anything else under D? Okay, all right, moving on to press time. There is no press time. Now we're on S.
Motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
Motion made and seconded on a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan, please.
Mrs. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Demello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Motion 3-1. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.